This is the United Podcast Network.
Welcome to Spouses Talking Houses with husband and wife real estate team Jennifer and Brian Frost. Everything you want to know about buying, selling, investing, and owning property. So let's get real about real estate.
Welcome back to Spouses Talking Houses. I'm Jennifer.
I'm Brian.
And I'm Doug Martin.
Well, thank you Doug for joining us. So Doug is a colleague of ours, works for KW Commercial, also an auctioneer who's helped inform us about auctions and a good friend and a good partner in crime. I mean, oops, in good works, right? In good works.
Yeah.
All right. So today, today we're going to get real about planning boards. We've had a couple of episodes recently about land and new construction. And you know, there's a big hole, there's a big gap in my education as to what actually happens at planning board. I know things go in, they come out, sometimes they don't come out. And that's, that's why we brought Doug in.
So I've had some experience with planning board. Yeah, I'd live in Sandown and been on the planning board there for many years. I recently chose not to run again this year after running the, not running the year before and getting reelected. But this time I didn't win.
You got, you got reelected without running?
Yeah.
You were a write-in?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. The town manager called me a couple of days later and congratulated me and says, what do you, what for? She says, you won again. I said, I didn't run. She says, that's never happened.
So how many people wrote you in? Do you know?
Enough.
I mean, it could have been as few as five or 10 people, right?
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I know two of them very well that wrote me in and didn't want me to leave.
That's awesome.
So, um, so I was on the planning board there for, for many years. And I got onto the planning board after serving on the zoning board of adjustments for many years. And it's kind of a stepping stone. Zoning board of adjustments is just a process where you apply to it and they accept you and you go on to the ZBA. When you're on planning board, it's actually an elected position in the town. So we have to, that's what you see in all the little signs out there, you know?
Right, right.
In my town, of course, in early March for that vote. And you're elected for either a one to three-year period.
Yeah. And those are always the ballots where I see all these names and I've no idea who any of these people are, you know?
So how many members does Sandown have on their planning board?
Any, any planning board, well, we have generally seven, at least five all the time. And we're trying to keep it at a level of seven and it has to be an odd number so that we can always have a tiebreaker and vote. But one of the members can be, a member of, one of the selectmen's can be part of it also. So when we need it, you know, they can vote.
Okay.
So before we get a little deeper into this, I just, I always like to talk a little bit about the Realtor lifestyle. You know, we supposedly have a flexible schedule, which often means that we're working all the time. But we do love to eat and drink and Brian and I recently got a new pizza oven.
Well, actually you purchased the pizza oven. I knew nothing about it.
I did. I bought you a gift that you actually didn't return. That's pretty awesome.
It was awesome.
That's very rare.
It is rare. Well, I could still return it.
It's true, but you're happy with it is what I'm saying. Yeah.
Yeah, the first trial run was, I was pleasantly surprised. Yeah.
Yeah. So it's an outdoor and it can use wood or charcoal.
Yep.
And it fits on a tabletop. So now we have to create a little table.
We?
Now you gotta build a base for it.
He's got to build a base for it. Exactly. Yeah.
I don't mind doing that stuff. So.
But it's portable. So you can bring it for tailgating and stuff like that. Yeah.
If we ever have games again.
Right. Unfortunately, I'm gluten-free, so I'm going to have to figure out something. But Casey, that led to Casey getting me to make some sourdough starter with gluten-free flour. So I can maybe make my own dough.
Sure. My daughter's doing the same.
Oh, really? All right. Good. So I'm, I actually did not feed it today. So I might not be a very good sourdough mom.
Well, I'll get into that next episode, but I was gonna say, how are you gonna take care of your dog?
How am I gonna take care of a dog? Exactly. Have you been getting any sailing in Doug?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have actually. It's been a wonderful season for sailing. The boat, as you know, it's down on Buzzards Bay and we're able to, because we're a little bit flexible in this business, we're able to grab a couple of days here and a couple of days there on a fairly regular basis. It's difficult to go out for four or five days.
Sure.
But we did that a couple of times and it's been a great year and it's already coming to an end. We will be decommissioning and putting it away for the winter here sometime next few weeks.
Yeah, the end of October probably. Yeah. Yeah. That is one thing that's changed a lot about the business is you can work from a variety of different places. I mean, I was just in the parking lot here taking care of a DOT Loop document. So you can get work done from a variety of different places as long as you've got some internet service. But you also, there's also the expectation that you're going to get back to people right away.
Right. Yep.
Yeah. So it's both a little bit easier. It's easier to take short bits of time to yourself, but it's harder to take longer.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, so anyway, so, so you're going to help tell me, first of all, what does a planning board do?
Okay. The purpose of the planning board on any, either city or municipality level is to review any major or minor subdivision plans that are being brought forward. Now, a minor subdivision plan would be three lots or less. And then a major one would be obviously four lots to up to however many. So in order to get that approved, they have to get the engineering done. They have to bring us a documentation or the set of plans and we do a design review. And the planning board will come up with a list of questions that we want answered or things that we wanted added to the plans in order to meet our town-specific zoning requirements.
Right.
So, and that can be as few as a few, five or six of them. And it can be many pages of them depending upon the size of the project. And an awful lot of it depends upon the land that they're actually developing.
Sure.
So they will take the plan. They'll come to planning board for a design review. We'll say, we want this and this and this. And then they go to conservation is required also to make sure that the local conservation in every town has that conservation committee. So to make sure that those things are all agreeable with them, that all wetlands are identified.
Right.
And then also, you know, anything that needs to be addressed is addressed properly.
Like a habitat issue or something like that?
Yeah, there's habitats, drainage, water runoff, you know, there's, and there's, they're constantly improving. The state of New Hampshire does a great job with bringing forward improving ideas on how to better manage wildlife and the wetlands as these developments to have a smaller impact on them. So, and then anything on the commercial side, we require a site plan. Well, they'll bring us a plan on it and this is where the building is and this is all the parking. And to make sure that the parking ratios are correct.
Right.
And to make sure that they are X amount of feet off the lot line so that they meet setbacks. And more recently, in the last several years, light pollution has become a bigger problem.
Oh, yeah.
Especially in these smaller towns. So we want to know how you're going to light it and the direction it's going to go so that it's not offensive to the neighbors at all. Because a lot of these are commercial spots and then there'll be residents real close to them as opposed to the big city where, you know?
Yeah.
You think of like a Route 111 or something like that.
That's a, that's a great example.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's going to be residential backed right up to that and even along that road.
And then all the services that that business will require tractor trailers coming in and out and hours of operation, stuff like that. So the planning board sees all that and then we have another whole set of regulations that we make sure that it, we check all the boxes as needed.
So as just a general resident and also what I see people ask in conversation or on Facebook, whenever something new, you know, comes in, particularly if it is a commercial or a retail business or something like that, we're always asking, you know, so why did they do that and what, you know? And particularly it seems like the parking is always arranged in a very convoluted way. And I assume that's so that you can't zip through the lot quickly.
Part of it. Yeah.
But it always to me ends up being very confusing.
Yeah.
But I guess the, if you could get from point A to point B fast, that would not be good in a parking lot.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's the, the parking regulations are always a big issue.
So is that, are those local regulations, state regulations, a combination of the both?
Combinations of both. You know, if it's, if generally if it's good with the town, it would be good with the state and vice versa. You know, you have ratios of like one parking spot for every
So many square foot of the building.
Square feet of building or whatever. You'll have one parking spot allotted to it or two. And then, you know, we want to make sure that everything is addressed. So you don't want the property to be messy. You want it to be a good neighbor. And the general, the, the public will have their day. They can come to the meetings. They can speak. The abutters are all notified and anybody else that's in town wants to come to the public hearings, they can. And they can review all the plans. And like with the smaller towns, you don't have to be in a butter to speak. You just have to wait your turn and you will get a chance to speak.
So, so if I receive a notice as an abutter, what do I do?
That, that is a legal notice that you, one that you're going to sign for. It's going to come as a registered letter.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah. You're going to come as a registered letter. And that's all the property owners that actually abut the property.
Yep.
So when you receive one of those, you sign it, you open it up. And that's when you're going to become aware of, this is the preliminary plan for XYZ business or XYZ development.
And I go, what?
Right. Oh, my God. I don't want that. It's going to ruin the value of my home.
I mean, that's first, first reaction. Yeah.
Of course. Yeah.
Right. So that's.
So if I'm, if I'm across the street from the parcel or I'm across the street from somebody abuts the parcel, I'm not going to get that notice?
No, you'll get noticed.
Yeah, across the street, you'll definitely get noticed.
Okay.
And, and I know in Sandown, we always put, check the abutters list and we err on the side of caution.
Too many rather than two.
And we'll bring in too many.
Yeah.
Because if by chance we did accidentally miss one, then that could start the whole process all over.
Oh, yeah.
So throw the net wide. It's only going to cost a few dollars more. So that everybody that is basically within a handshake of it is notified.
Sure.
And, and they can, you know, see what's going on as the process moves forward.
And then they have to post it in the newspaper, the local newspaper?
Yeah. It'll be posted in the local newspapers, also at the town hall. And also, well, of course, now with all the technology, you go to the town website.
Right.
And you can see all the posts for the ZBA and for the planning board for the conservation.
The agenda.
Right.
But then if I want to go look at what the actual plans are, is that also?
Some of them, some of them, as the plans move forward, some of the plans will end up going up online.
Okay.
But generally like in the smaller locations and you say, you know, you want to, you want to know what's going on, go talk to the people at the town hall and the planning department. They're more than happy to share the information and listen to any input you have.
Yeah. And I'm curious, what kind of information you get from the planning board? Because we, we usually, when we list a property, we have somebody make an offer on a property, we'll go check the building department file for additions, decks, septic plans, whatever. And in some towns, the planning and zoning is all combined into that one folder and others it's separate.
Correct.
But I very rarely find myself in the planning board except to ask if something is permissible. And the answer is typically no.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, can they help walk you through?
You mean on the town level in the planning board?
Yeah. If you go on the town planning board and you're like, I, I have some extra acreage and road frontage, you know, how would I go about subdividing this or something like that?
They'll, they should be able to provide you with, you know, a copy of the zoning requirements. Say, you know, you want to divide it and you want to put in a house lot up the street or next door to yours. And in order to do that, you're going to have to have X amount of frontage
Right.
on a road, on a class five road. And if you don't have that, then you're going to end up having to go to the zoning board of adjustments to get a variance for that. And, and you would get that before you come to the planning board with the plan.
Okay. Yeah. Cause zoning and planning overlaps a lot in my mind. So what is the difference?
Well, the zoning, the zoning is, is a place to go and ask for, say, the requirement is for 200 feet of road frontage on a town maintained classified road. And when you do your subdivision, you're not going to quite make 200, you're going to make, you know, 160 feet. So then you have to go to the zoning board in order to get an approval to put that house lot on there. Say, and, and they can generally, can grant them, providing that all the other things are met. You know, that if you have a two acre lot requirement, that you're going to meet that two acres. And then you're not going to be, you know, you're not trying to put it into the middle of a swamp.
So you mostly conform and it's just one little exception as opposed to we're trying to do something that's, you know, wholly non-conforming.
You don't necessarily have to prove hardship for, to receive a variance or?
Well, yes, yes. There's a criteria and that will be in your list. There's a, one of the criterias is that this is, you don't have any other choice.
Okay.
Okay. I only own 360 feet and, 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 you know, we need it to be 160. Well, sometimes, you know, then you got to take a little bit off the lot that you're on.
Right.
And ask for a variance that way so that, you know, the new lot line will, will be, the both of them can be as conformant as they possibly can.
That's what they're shooting for. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would have thought that if the zoning board gives you an approval, you don't then need to go to planning board. But you're saying if it's a subdivision of any type, it goes before planning board?
Yes. If you, if you are developing another residential lot off a piece of land that you own, it is going to have to go through the engineering process. Everything is going to have to be mapped out and it's going to have to go to planning board for approval. They're the ones that put the final stamp on it. And part of that will be any variances that are required are done.
Yep.
And that any issues conservation has has been addressed. And the neighbors have all been notified and have had their opportunity to appear.
And then your roads or public works department will sometimes also weigh in on the drainage or the road apron or?
They, they will.
I don't know the correct terminology, but?
Well, they do. Your local, your local road agent will, you have to go to them for a driveway permit. And their biggest thing is going to be the requirement that we have sightline, clear sightline.
Right.
200 feet to the right, 200 feet to the left, to the left-hand side. Basically about 42 inches off the ground because that's about the average of where we are when we're sitting in an automobile.
So that we're able to see before we pull out.
Able to see. And then they'll also look at any other issues that it may be, you know, they, if it's on a sharp bend and it's going to be a bus stop because it's going to be a bus stop, you know?
Right. There's no sidewalks. Yeah.
Right. And, and none of us own land forever. We're only stewards of them and make payments on them until, you know, and then, and then somebody else will do them. So, you know, safety is always their concern.
Right. That makes sense. That makes sense. Who assigns the house number at the end? Is that the fire department or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's just because they want it to be something that they can hear clearly and won't confuse with another house or?
I, I would assume so. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know why. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, often they change like street and drive or whatever because there'll be two similar streets in town.
Right, right.
Manchester, what is it? Fosh, Fosh Street? There's two Fosh Streets.
There's two of them. Yeah.
In Manchester. I don't know what they?
There's three North Shore Roads in Derry.
Oh, right. Yeah.
I always thought they were just different sections of the same road.
Well, they might've been born that way a million years ago.
Right, right.
As you know, now, you know, North Shore Road, you go in your GPS and I'm not sure which one of them.
Right.
And you know, when I'm doing something for the residential side of my business, I gotta go find the house.
Well, I know in London Derry, there was concern about Hovey, Harvey and Hardy. And they wanted to change one or more of them. And the residents who lived there objected to it.
Right.
And I thought, you know, I'd rather do a change of address than have the fireman not be able to get to my house if I was having a heart episode or something like that. Yeah. But anyway, I digress. So if you're going to make, if I'm going to make an application for a residential subdivision, you mentioned the engineering, who, what professionals do I need on my team? How do I put that whole thing together?
You're going to start with an engineering firm and you're going to go through the planning process with them. They're going to go out and they're going to do a preliminary where they're going to go out and mark the wetlands that are on the lot and, and identify them on the documentation that is going to go in front of the board. And then anything else that you would need as part of your team would, I would suggest is that you bring in a lawyer that is familiar with land development, just to make sure that the process and the paperwork is all good on that end. We don't, we don't want to have, and you'll do, you know, they'll do abstracts on the deed and make sure that, you know, this thing is actually in decent condition and we can, you know, and we can do it.
Yep.
Because if we have a cloud on the title on the, on the mother lot, we need to make sure that that gets up there because we can't break that into 10 different deeds until the first one is absolutely correct.
And these larger parcels have usually not transferred for a long, long time.
Oh, there's a lot of them that have been one or two owners. I just sold one in Epping a few weeks ago that, you know, it's had like four owners before and Jesus was the, you know, the first one.
Right. Yeah. Like you go back two deeds and they're handwritten and, you know, very imprecise.
And, and that's very typical of New England.
Right.
Being very imprecise because it was, you know, to the oak tree on Joe Smith's lot. Where the oak tree's been gone for a hundred years. So we actually have to go.
Everybody knew where Joe Smith lived, you know, it wasn't, it was common knowledge. Yeah. So.
So now we gotta go out and find that spot where the tree used to be and put a pin there.
Right, right. So, so you, do you usually go make a site visit the board?
Planning board will end up doing site walks quite often, especially with a major subdivision. But I mean, almost always it's a part of it as just doing, our job is being on the planning board, just doing our due diligence to go out and walk the site. And when you're out there with three, four people on a Saturday morning, the neighbors are going to come and talk to you and they're going to, you know, they're going to want to.
They're going to express their opinions and ask questions.
They're going to ask some questions, but you know, we're not here for a hearing. So if you don't like the person or whatever, you know, this isn't, this isn't the point. We can do that. And everybody's good about it.
Yeah.
But you know, a lot of times we'd be standing there or holding a piece of paper and trying to figure it out. Well, the neighbor actually knows.
Right, right.
That makes sense.
Right. No, this is, you know, that's.
This is the corner. Yeah.
Our understanding, my understanding is, is where that big rock is, is where the pin should be, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah. So that's very helpful.
Yeah.
And I was, you mentioned the surveyor going in and flagging the wetlands. Do they use specific colors for specific things or is it pretty random?
No, they use specific colors for Pacific soil types.
Oh, it's soil types. Okay. Cause I've tried to match it up before to the wetlands map and it, I haven't been able to figure out.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's the soil types.
Well, it's soil types, yeah. And the vegetation. There's, there's quite a few different things and.
Interesting. Okay.
You, you and I, we wouldn't need to understand it. We just need to know how it's presented.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. That's what, that's what experts do.
If they say that's wetlands, then that's good enough for me. You know, they're the ones that are going to identify it.
So once, for residential, for residential subdivision of more than four lots, how long does that process usually take from application to some sort of a decision? I know, I know they're not all the same. I understand that. Yeah.
Realistically, you know, so you inherited a large piece of property and you want to do it. Generally, something like that is going to go through the approval process and it's probably going to take at least a year.
I mean, I mean, if everything just went with the minimums, you need, I think, something like four months just because of all the notices and the abutters and the hearings and schedule and all of that, right?
You know, you're going to notice for the ZBA, you're going to notice, you know, for the planning board. And it's still going to go through conservation. And, and so once it's been noticed, you know, you're going to be on the list for all the different stuff. You know, the, the whole part, the whole thing.
And there's going to be, there's going to be board meetings and then there's going to be public comment meetings.
Yeah.
And then if there are approvals, there's an appeal period for the public as well. Is that right?
Yeah. On both boards, there's an appeal process where within 30 days, if somebody comes forward to that particular board and says that, here's some information that wasn't brought forward. We can't go back and rehash what we've already talked about 10 times over. That part of our discussion is done.
Right.
But if we come back and we say, they say, you know, this was not presented, then you can appeal it. And it's going to go back to the process again for that particular thing to be appealed. That's the only thing they're going to talk about.
You have to focus on that one issue.
Yeah. We're not opening up the can of worms and making them redo the whole thing again.
Right.
But you know, if there is an issue, you know, you guys, you know, there's, there's something on that lot that is never identified. I think we need to discuss this a little bit further.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's also going to depend on how much is on their plate as far as, you know, other developments and whatnot.
Is your agenda already full? Do they have to go to a future meeting, that type of thing?
Exactly. It's first come and first served. And, and some of the larger communities, you could wait a few months just to get on the agenda because they're very specific. If they are going to, can only do four meetings a night and they get together once or twice a month, then you're going to have to wait in that process if there's something else ahead of you. You're going to have to wait your turn.
Are you guys doing Zoom meetings right now for your, for Sandown or?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. They're all doing Zoom meetings.
So did you skip a few in the spring and then, yeah?
Yeah. Well, everything closed down.
Right.
I agree. And on, on my side of it, the commercial side, I had stuff in quite a few different town planning boards.
Yeah.
And we all just kind of had to stand there and hold our hands out and say, we can't do anything.
Yeah.
And then, you know, it did start to turn back on and everybody was doing what they could.
We had something before the, the ZBA in Manchester and the same thing happened. It was like, we don't know when we're going to meet again.
Right.
We have other stuff that, you know, that we would have met on in March, that's got to go on the agenda when we start again.
Right. And a lot of them didn't open up again until May.
Yeah.
Now, now the process is starting to come back around. Some meetings are socially distant and able to hold a meeting in the room again. And some of them are still doing Zoom.
So I've always thought that I would be a terrible community board member because of the public hearing part. And, you know, do you have issues with the public getting a little out of control? Yeah. And do you have to bite your tongue?
I always say that I don't have a disagreement with anyone and I'll say this right in front of the room. Say that, you know, I don't have a disagreement with any of this, but we could have differences of opinion. And we're all here as an adult and we all just want to express what we need to express and stay focused only on that subject. It's real important not to get going down the road where their, their little boy did something at the bus stop.
Oh, yeah.
Don't get personal about this.
Small, small towns in particular, but even, even big cities, if it gets into personalities. Yeah.
Right. And, and, and yes, there's, there's a lot of times there's going to be big issues. Like if it's not, not so much for like a development, but for somebody that has a residential property and they want to put a business in there.
Right.
That's when you're going to start making the neighbors angry.
Yes.
And they're going to come forward and they don't always come forward in the best manners. So.
Cause they've gotten riled up over, you know, over it. Yeah.
And, you know, they've, they've heard everything. So they already, they already know everything, you know? And nine times out of 10, we calm them down and, and everything can move forward. And an awful lot of time, you know, they all walk away better friends than they were when they came there because, okay, oh, now I understand.
Okay.
Is that what you, well, you know, can you, can you make sure that the light doesn't shine on, on my yard at 10 o'clock at night? Well, of course we can do that.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, well, then I'm fine with it. I'm good with it. Go ahead.
Yeah.
You know, is it, is it dark on Sundays? You know, I mean, is it quiet? What's the hours of operation?
Yeah.
I don't want them at four in the morning. Like, you know, a lot of trucking companies.
Yes.
A lot of trucking companies and on the commercial side, you know, there's a large trash business that wanted to go into one of my sites. But, you know, they were going to be starting diesel rigs at four o'clock in the morning to head out.
Right.
So the neighbors had right to say no.
Yeah.
Of course.
You know?
One of our clients has, is having a, a large truck repair facility
Yeah.
being built next door to them. And the, the planning board for that time restricted the hours. And it's still under construction and hasn't started operation yet. But that's their concern is they want to know, is the business going to stick to the permitted hours or not? Yeah.
They will.
Yeah.
They will.
Go ahead.
Okay. I was just going to say, so for commercial, is it only subdivisions that become, come before planning board? Or is it just about any commercial project that would come?
It's almost any commercial project.
I would think so.
Will have to go to, every time, every time we put a purchase and sale agreement, one of the parts of it will be the due diligence. And a part of it will be state and local approval for this XYZ use.
Right.
Now, you're in a hair salon. It's a commercial building. You sell the hair salon to another late person that's in the hair business. So all we're really doing, it's a very soft swap. We're pulling you out and we're putting him in and it's the same use.
Right.
But that still needs to go to the planning board because if there's any other things or updates since your site was approved.
Right.
We want to address them again.
Sure.
And, and a lot of it, what we see now is if they're doing any major rehabs, now we have to go for fire safety and they end up having to put a sprinkler in a building. And now, now it turns into a much bigger project than, than some of the other stuff.
And so you guys are reviewing things like parking and curb cuts and signage?
Yep.
The size of the building?
Size of the building, its particular use, you know, how many employees do you expect you're going to have here now? And how many in the future? Fire and safety is, is, are you going to have a fuel dock on there for your vehicles, you know, to, are you going to be storing diesel or gasoline on the, on the property? If so, then that has to be handled in a certain way. And, you know, it's just basically, so that everybody involved has a very good, clear understanding of its use now and its intended use in the future.
Speaking of which, I've seen some crazy drive-through setups.
More and more.
More and more. Yeah. Very convoluted drive-throughs. Yeah.
So our planning board members, are they paid?
Oh, they're paid well.
Really? No. Are you? No, are you?
I was going to say, you can't be paid enough.
No, exactly.
No, it is not a paid position. It could be in some of the bigger cities, but I, not that I'm aware of.
Sure.
Because we don't live in big cities here.
That's what I thought, but.
But, you know, we are reimbursed. There's always educational classes that are going on and, and, you know, if you sign up to go take one of those and it's in Concord and stuff like that, you know, you, you are reimbursed for, you know, your, your fuel and your stuff like that. Now, generally, you know, we're, we're volunteers.
Right.
So, so if somebody was interested to serve on their local planning board, what would they expect as far as like time commitment goes? You mentioned you start off at zoning.
You don't have to, you can, you can, you can apply and sign up like in, like in our town, every, all the signup is going to be done by the end of January. And, and then you can start putting your word out there and of course that with social media, it's pretty easy to get it out.
Sure.
So, you know, you would, you would do that with the ZBA and, and planning board